Color in your cheeks, Mr. Cuddy. Makeup up front.
Showtime.
Good evening. This is the November 10th meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. First up, reserved decision.
All right. Mr. Chairman, respectfully, I'll read the deplet portion of the decision, which says that this board hereby determines to grant the interpretation as requested, subject to the following conditions: Designed to ensure that the applicant maintains the operation proposed as a home occupation. The ZBA recommends that the town board include in any special permit it determines to issue one, the home occupation may not be expanded beyond that which the applicants have described in their application and at the public hearing. Two, no coffee shall be roasted or sold in any accessory structure used for the home occupation. Three, no signage other than the small nameplate allowed pursuant to Chapter 301, Section 3, may be posted on the premises. Any signage placed on the premise, including traffic direction or business identification, in parent's sandwich board, closed parent, shall not be permitted. Bread products may not be delivered or picked up by appointment only, may be delivered or picked up by appointment only. There shall be no quote "open hours" end quote of the business. There shall be no onsite consumption by customers of any products produced on the premises.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zaweski.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, Salbro, Sal bread goes on in Jamesport, Akeborg, whatever. But anyway, you guys gave us certainly an interesting feedback after what things can be done in a COVID situation, which you all, which we all went through. And thanks for giving back to the neighborhood. And good luck with it.
Yes, good luck.
Okay.
She's gonna give you a copy of the.
And no coffee? No roasting coffee. Okay, all right.
It said in the accessory structure. That means you can have it in your own kitchen.
Anyway, thank you. It was an interesting, it was an interesting case.
Forty-five?
Forty-five, Washington.
Can't hear it.
He's here.
Why did you say they swear to it? That they did?
He doesn't have it?
It's the same as an affidavit.
No.
Anything?
He did it, but he didn't know the mailings, the, he has all the mailings. I have proof of the poster, but we don't have the affidavit.
What does the affidavit say?
Where?
That they put the poster up and did the mailings.
She didn't swear to it. It's the same as.
We had nothing we could do here?
It has to be notarized.
Notaries here?
I'm a notary.
Wait.
Mr. Curry.
Let's not get too carried away. What are we talking about? We're talking about forty-five Washington?
Correct.
And there needs to be something notarized, a document needs to be notarized? And what is the document?
He did not bring it with him.
And is that something you have readily available that he could sign and have it notarized? And does that make the record complete?
I can print one and do it that way.
Let's notarize them up.
Well, let's do it in order of the hearings. I mean, is that the next hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do it.
Just gonna have to pause, so I have to log out here and then log in, so I can print it up there.
Take your time.
So, while we're doing that, and we know we're gonna have that document, wait till she comes back, but I think we could start the hearing at least. Right, Mr. Chairman? Or do you want to wait?
Let's wait.
Okay.
We have such a new audience here. We're usually two or three people.
I left that for Ed.
And it's usually Mr. Cuddy or one other person. Yes, we'll take everyone right now. Take your time.
Conspiracy.
Channel twenty-two is always looking to extend us.
You mean the names, the names, right?
Well, I'm Frederick J. McLaughlin III, if you really.
The names are over there.
That's not us.
And?
That's not us. Those names are not us.
Oh, okay, so why, any names? Got any names put up here so we can know who's talking? No?
Well, we'll introduce ourselves as we go along.
And you are?
And you are from what newspaper?
I'm not from any newspaper.
Oh, okay.
We'll find out some later, right?
Can you what?
I think the clerk.
You're gonna have to speak at the podium.
Right, after we, after we announce who we're looking for.
After we have your affidavit printed, and you can sign it and be notarized.
Why don't we, for a moment, why don't we just go down the list and everybody introduce themselves?
No.
Instead of doing it during the.
Take your time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm the marching gun buddy.
She might be the one that owns five ninety-nine. Now she.
No, I don't think so. We'll ask, we'll ask our assistant to put our names up.
I'm trying to stay positive, okay, Judge? Hey, did I ever call you?
No, just don't worry about it.
Fill this out.
Sometimes, if I don't pick up the phone, leave a message. But sometimes, if I don't recognize the phone, I won't pick it up myself. By the way, have you got any warranty in your car? Have you gotten that phone for you?
Oh, we get it. I get the Medicare discount, about seven a day.
No, I get the warranty on your car. This is your last chance.
I know. I asked them, tell them what car it is. They can't name the car, so. Then I got this one, and if I don't respond, then I can be arrested. This is good.
Oh, yeah, I know. They told my old partner to come and get me.
We need our nameplates up front, because obviously some people are having a hard time figuring out who we are. So if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Can you run across the street and give them a week of wait?
Take your time.
Make everybody wait.
Want some now?
Wait, yeah, we have to.
That's the guy who wants to.
Unless you have them across the street.
In the future.
They're across the street.
Then leave them where they are.
Yes.
Can you order us a couple?
No.
Coffee and donuts?
Please.
Not yet, but we're working on it.
I was singing Cadence.
It's a very accommodating board. A lot of these boards would not even go a step further. Come back in two weeks. Did you set the example as the chairman?
Yes. I want to take, Sarah, what's your name? Do you swear to contents of this affidavit?
I swear.
Okay, thank you.
All right, where are, where are we here?
I will.
I'm totally lost. No, yes. All right. Do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, self-evident?
I do.
State your name and your address. Go ahead, you got it. Excuse me, let her read the.
Posting.
Appeal twenty twenty-one zero four nine forty-five Washington Avenue, Jamesport, tax map number six hundred eighty-nine two fifty-four point three, RV forty zoning, variances under relief from Chapter three oh one, Section three B, accessory building, structure, or use, where habitable space in an accessory structure is not deemed customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal building or use.
You have the floor.
Okay. So.
I did.
Basically, what we have is a small shed that is next to the house, and the previous owner used it, they kind of like a little kitchenette and a little bathroom in it. And when I purchased the property, I ripped the kitchenette out. It's a small little structure, and I used it as an office, but it still has a bathroom in there. And I believe that this is supposed to be like shed and not a home office, but I would say that my, you know, usage of it is more in keeping with like a home office than a shed. And it doesn't have like heating or cooling, it just has like a window AC, so it's not for living or anything like that. It's just, I sit there and I, and I work in it, basically.
Excuse me, is that the dwelling that's labeled cottage on your survey?
No, I don't believe that that is labeled cottage.
One-story frame cottage. That's what it says on the survey.
No, if I could see.
Is it north of the house, the main house?
It is, yes, it's, it's to the, yes, it's to the north.
And it is, it is west of the garage?
It is west of the garage, yes.
So, on the survey, it calls it a cottage. It doesn't call it shit.
Okay.
I would assume you filled this application out yourself?
I did.
Okay.
Pardon me, Leroy, the tech said he'd like you to repeat your name. It wasn't picked up on the.
Oh, the name is Ramon Maisland.
And your address?
Forty-five Washington Avenue.
Okay.
Thank you. So, so on the survey that we received, it says, one story, one story, so it's potentially another cottage or rental that's on the property. So there's three, there's four rentals on the property now, or three or two?
There's three.
There's three?
Yes.
So when you say you reside at forty-five, you really don't live here, you just rent these places out? I mean, it's not your primary residence, is it?
Well, I just, I just moved out in September.
So you're living in this.
No, no, I was, I was, I'm in the city now, but I was living there through.
For the summer?
No, I was there for the last year and a half.
Okay.
And I was, yeah, so we, we just came back. But the two, it's a little complicated. The other rental houses, there was a woman who sold it, and she lives in one until the day she dies.
Okay.
And the other one is just a guy who's been living there for twenty years or so. So they're not like summer rentals, it's people that, that have been living there for a long time. And the other structure, it's very, very small. It's, I don't know, two, two hundred square feet about. It's not a, it's not for living in.
So the, the main house, how many square feet is the main house, do you know?
The main house, it's like twenty-four hundred square feet.
Okay, so there's not really enough room in there for an office?
Well, I have three children that drive me crazy. So, so, I mean, now it's a little bit easier. You know, there was, they were like, you know, at home a lot, so that's my primary reason why I was there, even when it was very cold, and I was wearing like a fleece and an extra jacket and, you know, wool socks to have some peace and quiet. But that's obviously not as big a problem anymore.
So you said it wasn't heated, but I did see a heat stack on the back. Or is that a fireplace vent or?
No, there's no, on the, the small cottage?
Yeah.
No, in the, behind it, there's a.
I saw the vent pipe for the bathroom, and then I saw a heat pipe. Do you know what's in there?
There should be, there should be no, there's, behind it, there's, there's like a pool equipment stuff. But there's no, there's no heat pipe. There's a electric boiler for the water.
Okay.
But there's no heating or cooling.
So the plans are showing a utility room. Do you plan on putting heat in that building?
No.
So you're gonna just work out there and freeze in the winter?
I mean, I have like a, like a space heater that I put in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I just put like a space heater, because I'm not sleeping there. So if it's like sixty degrees, I don't, you know, I don't really care. If I was sleeping there, then I might care more.
So, the building inspector, when he inspected it?
Yep.
He, he see the kitchen beforehand, or did you take the kitchen out?
No, 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 I removed the kitchen. Or they, the previous owners actually removed the kitchen prior to me purchasing it, because when they did like a, whatever it is, like a title search or something like that, they said that it's not supposed to have a kitchen, so.
Well, CO search.
The CO search, I guess, yeah, so.
So you got a letter of pre-existing non-performing use stating that each cottage is rented out and it's livable. They, they don't have COs, but they have pre-existing uses, because they've been there for a long time.
Exactly.
And when they did that, and they looked in the shed, so-called shed, which is.
Yes.
A cottage, did he get, did he gain access to that building?
Who is that, the person?
To the building inspector.
Building inspector.
The building inspector denied you.
Yes. I wasn't there when it happened, so, so the contractor was there when it happened, because it happened when I think that he was trying to close out the permits.
Okay.
So I was actually not there. I'm assuming that he went in everywhere, though. That'll be my assumption, but I don't actually know.
So if someone were to go in there now, there's no kitchen in there at all?
No, definitely not.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think, I, I believe that I sent pictures along with it in an email that just shows it as like an empty space.
Did you, did you receive pictures, Carissa?
Uh, just the floor plan.
Oh, you know what? Yeah, just the outside of it. I can send pictures that show the inside without any kitchen.
That would be nice.
Yeah, I can definitely do that.
I'd like to see that.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's no problem.
So when you took, they took the kitchen out, did you come in and re-sheet rock it? Or it's just?
Yes, yes.
So you did that work?
I re-sheet rocked it, and I put new floor down.
Why are you, did you file for a building permit because they told you you needed one? Or did you file because you wanted to close out the record, because that kind of hung you up in the closing?
Uh, no, 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 no. I, I filed a building permit to do other renovation. I didn't file any building permit for this. We just put new floor down and, and like basically put new interior sheet rock over the existing. So there's already sheet rock there?
Okay.
And we just.
So I would assume the pool house is relatively new. Was that your doing?
Yes, yes, everything else is new, everything else is.
So you applied for the permit, got a CO for that pool house?
Yes.
Whatever.
Yeah.
So that's legal?
Everything other than, correct.
Does that have a kitchen in it?
It does not.
Does it have a bathroom?
It does not.
So do you plan on using the cottage office for bathroom facilities for the pool?
I mean, that was the idea, because it's already, I don't need to have two bathrooms. Yeah, exactly. It was already there, so I was like, there's no reason to.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else to be heard?
Does anybody want to be heard on this?
Step up to the microphone.
It's okay. Please come on up.
Raise your right hand, and you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, self-evident?
Yes, sir.
State your name and your address.
My name is Sean Williams. I live in Matatuck, but I work at Great Conic.
What's your address?
Can you pull the mic up?
Four oh five South Tribe, Matatuck is where I live. But I'm involved at Great Conic Bay Marina on Washington Avenue.
So you were asking about a shower?
Yeah, I, I saw the picture. It, it shows a shower in an office bathroom. Well, what do you need a shower for in an office bathroom?
Well, it might be pre-existing already, I don't know. I didn't gain access.
Okay, I, I don't know either. I thought, I thought this, I thought this was a plan that he was looking to do. And I'm like, you know, if he wants to make an office space there.
That's the impression I had.
That's fine, but I mean, if you're gonna make an office space out there, to have a toilet and sink is acceptable. What would you need a shower for? Just curious.
Well, we're gonna ask you.
Okay.
Thank you. You have to come back up to the mic.
So, but like I said, it was a, the, the structure had a kitchen and a full bathroom, and so we ripped out the kitchen, because I'm using it as an office, but we just kept the bathroom that was there.
So the bathroom has a shower in it already?
Yeah, it has a shower, a sink, and a toilet in it. And then, so, I said, okay, well, we can use it, you know, if you're outside or whatever, you can use this bathroom as well. You don't need to, you know, if you come back from the beach or whatever. I mean, this is, I'm not, it's just a small little office, so if a little sand gets in, it's not a problem.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not gonna rent it out, and we're not gonna use it for habitable space, is that right?
No, exactly. Yeah, exactly. It's just.
It's gonna be conditioned, if we do approve it, we're conditioned that it's only to be an office?
Yeah, a hundred percent.
And an accessory bathroom, which is already hooked up.
Exactly.
Was that already approved by the Suffolk County Health Department?
No, I, not that I'm, not that I'm aware of.
I'll ask the building inspector for that.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I, what I would like to do, Mr. Chairman, is reserve decision on this.
Absolutely. There's no, no two ways about that.
We find out if it's got Suffolk County Health Department approval.
Did you also want photos, too?
And I'll say, yeah, I can send interior photos, current interior photos.
Anyone else to be heard on this issue? Let's move on.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that the appeal of Ramon Maisland, forty-five Washington Avenue, be adjourned until.
December.
Hold on.
December ninth. And with that, we were gonna receive pictures for the inside of the building, the shower, and then by then, we should have, we should leave it open for written comment as well, between now and the next meeting, if any.
Okay. Mr. Barnes?
I need a second, Mr. Chairman.
I second. Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Weskey.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so, see folks in December.
December ninth, okay.
Thank you.
Yes, please, thank you.
And Carissa, when we do type this decision up, make sure, make sure that's a condition in there, that it's only to be used as an office and bathrooms to be accessory to the pool. This is not the, and Health Department.
No, no, no.
That's a must.
I recuse.
That's it?
Yes.
Appeal twenty twenty-one zero zero one five ninety-nine Conic LLC, five ninety-nine Conic Bay Boulevard, Jamesport, tax map number six hundred eighty-seven two eighteen, RV forty zoning, variances under relief from Chapter three oh one, Section seventeen, where existing lot width is sixty point six three feet, and minimum required is one hundred feet. Where side yards are three point two feet and twenty-three point eight feet, and minimum required is twenty-five feet and thirty feet respectively. Where rear yard setback is forty-five point two feet, minimum required is sixty feet. Where proposed impervious surface is nineteen point nine percent, and maximum permitted is fifteen percent. Section fifteen A, fifteen A one A, where proposed garage and pool house located in front yard, which is not permitted. Section fifteen A one B, where pool is five point two feet from property line, and minimum required is twenty feet. Where pool house is four point nine feet from property line, and minimum required is twenty feet. And where framed garage is five point three feet from property line, and minimum required is twenty feet.
Mr. Cuddy.
Mr. Chairman.
As always, you will figure out everything, yes.
I recuse. I'll be back.
Yeah, sure.
We were here four weeks ago, so this is not completely new, but just to remind you, this is a lot that's in the RV forty district. It's sixty feet wide, and it's eighteen thousand square feet, so it's less than half an acre. And that, our forty district. When we were here last time, we put in some exhibits, because there was a serious concern about setbacks. So we gave you the DEC determination, we gave you the CAC, the Conservation Advisory Determination, and we also gave you an overhead photo. When we were in the middle of our application last time, we heard for the first time that we needed to revise the plan. We weren't aware of that, but we certainly became aware of it. And so, what happened is, we heard you, and we listened, and tonight with me is Sandra Devando, who is the owner, with her sister, who is also here, and our architect, Stuart Phillips. When I say she listened, she went to the neighbors and discussed with them problems that they thought were incident to this particular application. And after listening to them and going back to our architect, she's moved the house back, she's moved it in, she's reduced the impervious surface coverage by six hundred and twenty square feet. It was nineteen point nine, it's now sixteen point three. Her house is essentially the same width as the existing house, it's only three feet wider. I would like Stuart Phillips, the architect, to elaborate upon what was done, so you can see exactly what she's done, but we've done a considerable amount.
Mr. Cuddy, do you have like a survey or a drawing, or?
He's got, he's got.
He's gonna bring it up first?
Yeah. If we could get the easel, I guess I could.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Stuart Phillips, and Sandra's architect.
And if you raise your right hand, and you swear it's all the truth, nothing but the truth, self-evident?
I do.
State your name and your address.
Stuart Phillips, one ninety-nine Humboldt Street. This might be a little clumsy, because I'm not in a car.
No idea.
I think we might be better off up here. There's no way they're gonna work up there.
Sure, sure. Table is probably easier.
Right up here.
I can also present it to our audience, if I want to include this. These are four illustrations. What I'm representing here is relative to the other properties' size and configuration, illustrating the chunk of the side setbacks.
And where's our spot?
This is the existing.
Okay.
And these are the neighboring properties.
Gotcha.
The intent is just to show relative setbacks compared to what's existing, and then to show any, this is demonstrating what we had in our, this is existing versus proposed, demonstrating that we're moving everything much further away from both the side setback and from the rear setback.
So now you're talking almost fifty feet back?
Yeah, we're forty-two feet, yeah, we're forty-nine.
Almost there.
Yeah. And this is just demonstrating what, this is what we had last time. The red outline is the existing property. This is what we proposed four weeks ago, and that's showing what we've done subsequent to that, taking into account all the comments we've heard both from neighbors and from.
So the garage and the breezeway are gonna be removed?
We've eliminated those completely. We've eliminated the breezeway, we've eliminated the garage, we've eliminated the pool house.
That works.
And we've reduced the size of impervious coverage, and that's the depth of the pool house, by around six hundred and twenty square feet. And obviously increased. And this is what is straight, this is obviously a combination of.
Of the house, what it exists?
And the proposed, yeah, to show, you know, obviously it's a two-story, it's a one-story. This is to show that the scale is not out of character, and it's been set back much further than what we currently have.
So what I would like to propose is maybe have these drawings put on the table, and any interested parties can come and look at it, or go further.
Yes. Folks, take your time. There's no hurry. My man, Mr. Otto's never in bed before midnight or at night.
Yeah, actually, I think the slide, the exhibit of most consequence is to show what we've done since our last presentation, and basically.
Say what?
This one, I believe, here, the red outline is the existing property. The blue footprint is showing what we proposed, the house, the breezeway, the garage, and the pool house. And this is here, what we demonstrated here is that obviously this is still the existing. And this is. And this is what we're proposing now. And we've eliminated the breezeway, the garage, and the pool house. Um, we've moved the whole house and structure, everything back away from the side of the west property, um, to about eight feet beyond the property line. And so we've gone to about sixteen point three some percent of the coverage.
All right, you moved it this way, but you moved it further this way.
No, we actually compressed the whole thing. So we haven't.
What's this for?
Um, it's, it's, it's about a five foot increase, a five and a half foot increase in this, in the size, um, setback. So we've gone from about three feet from the property line to about eight and a half feet from the property line. And we, we basically compressed everything, so we didn't approach any further onto the east property line.
Does the second floor project?
Yes, that has, that has not changed.
Yeah, it didn't change?
No.
It didn't change. So the second floor projects six foot?
Six foot two.
Six inches to the water side?
Yeah. So, yeah, this, this, um, is a pretty clear indication, we've got the existing cottage goes to us, and that's the new one. So this is just to show, like, we have pushed it far back beyond the existing cottage. Um, and part of the reason for that projection is to clear the space underneath, so you can maintain a view both from, you know, from both sides of the beach and both sides of the property. To try and maintain that view, so we're not creating a wall at eye level. And then before, you know, if you wanna be quite specific, I've got most of the fairly accurate measurements of setbacks, just to show what we've done to try and increase all the distances from property lines and from, from the neighbors.
But we should have seen this ahead of time.
Well, it will be. It has to be.
Okay.
We can't just say, okay, we vote for this. No.
Okay, so we'll have a chance, we'll have a chance to take a look at this.
It's a do-over. It has to be posted in a new way, but we're hoping everybody's gonna agreeable, so we can move forward. So what is, what is your siding proposal? Do you think you have a siding issue material?
Oh, um, at the moment, we're looking to do cedar. So, yeah. Trying to keep, obviously trying to keep the, the form, we're trying to keep, um, context on material, we're trying to keep context. It's just the detailing, which is a little bit more contemporary.
DB?
Yeah. We reduce that in science as well.
All right, sports fans, it looks like we're gonna have to repost this. And our decision will become, coming down in the next, next meeting, so.
There'll also be a new survey submitted for the zoning board, has to be. Showing the proposed structures, and the building inspector has to mend his letter with the air mend application. Because all the new setbacks will be on the, it has to be on the survey.
And whether it could be posted online with the application?
Yes, we usually do now, anyway. It has to be on the survey, yeah.
This is where the houses now, this is the, the, like, the sitting.
Sorry, but, so it's a compromise.
And this is the edge of the house proposed. Then what's, what's this black line?
That's the, that's exactly, outside the house.
So this is really the set, the, the setback, not to hear.
Yeah, so I'll remove this line to the, uh, December. Water path to water path.
But, but it really, this is the end of the first.
There is a row.
That's on the first floor.
There are here motions to, uh, move, uh, move this, repub, a move. Repost and settle this until December ninth.
So the setback.
There are here motions. Second?
No, you have to make a motion first.
No, it's not the second. It's not the second. It's gotta be the least of night.
They said the second for your, what you're talking about, you know, like in formal procedure? It's been seconded.
Good thing we can't have sidearms up here.
All in favor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There are here a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting.
You what?
Yes, motion to accept.
All in favor, aye.
You're very effective, Fred.
I'm totally out of control.
Nice plan.
Much better, much better proposal.
This is really great presentation.
I think it's a good proposal.
Well, I think visually, it's just easier to understand. It's hard to correlate the visuals, so.
There are here, there are here a motion to adjourn the meeting?
No, it's not over yet.
Yes, it is.
What about Leafy Way? There's another one, uh, on the.
Elton Street.
An Elton Street.
Well, you got your grump on tonight?
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in. All right.
Oh, forty-eight.
Let's have a reading.
Um, okay, so.
Sorry, folks, but we need to move on.
Nice job.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, Mr. Chair, Mr. Cuddy? Do you think you'll need more time to have the survey prepared for the resubmission? Do you think two, you know, December ninth is enough?
That's close, that's, yes.
I, I would, I would suggest that you ask to have it moved to, into January.
Because the next meeting after that is January.
I believe so.
Exactly. We got one meeting December, that's it.
I don't know if we can get it done that quickly.
Let's, let's go, let's go January.
Well, let's go January. If you need an extension, we'll give you one. How's that? But we're gonna repost it. You may.
You swear or you gotta swear?
Well, come back up to the mic, so we can explain to you.
I don't know if she's a swearer.
What surveyor's gonna have it done that fast?
Young and young, dog, yeah, and dog.
And you think they'll have it done before December ninth?
I think so. I mean, I will do my best to.
Are we taking bets?
I'm sorry? No, but, uh.
She's in it.
We'll try, we'll try. I would prefer if it's okay, if you agree to the ninth, and then we'll hear an extension.
Fine.
What I will do, if it's okay with the board, is I will check the young and young. If they have a problem, I'll immediately notify you.
Thank you.
Sounds good to us, Mr. Cuddy. Young lady, what are you up to? Step up to the microphone, please. If you'd kindly raise your right hand, do you swear it's all the truth, nothing but the truth, so we got it?
I did.
Say your name and your address.
Maureen Seaman, six six one Paconic Bay.
Pull the microphone down to you. There you go.
Maureen Seaman, six six one Paconic Bay Boulevard, Riverhead, which is really Jamesport.
Gotcha.
Several houses down from this property, and I am a member of the Beach Harbor Civic Association, which is adjacent to the property. And I had prepared my concerns. According to the survey, we were presented at your la, for your last meeting, which is now gone. So I will, my question is, will we, the prop, adjacent property owners, have access to this new survey in enough time prior to your next meeting? Will we then have a chance to ask questions? Or are you gonna vote at that next meeting?
We hope to.
No, we're gonna sit, we're gonna sit you down, you're gonna ask as many questions as you want. And, and we're not gonna adjourn it to the next meeting. So whatever, whatever you have coming, coming before us.
Then you're gonna have to get together and make your decision that night.
No, absolutely not.
Oh, well, that's my concern. If we present.
No, 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 no.
Questions, are, are you gonna then just go back and discuss it among yourselves?
Give us the questions. No, give us the questions, we'll look up the answers as best we can, and then we'll take it from there. But as a decision, as, to be as, uh, that night, no.
Okay, that was my concern, because it sounded like you.
No, 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 no.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Okay, what else we got going?
Appeal twenty twenty-one zero four eight Signature Partners LLC, six eighty Elton Street, Riverhead. Tax map number six hundred one oh nine one eighteen CRC zoning. For a special exception from chapter three oh one, section two twenty-two B, where both proposed warehousing, distribution use, and existing manufacturing use are non-conforming uses within the CRC zoning use district. Pursuant to town code, zoning board of appeals may approve a special exception to allow the change from one non-conforming use to another.
Hard to believe we see Mr. Cuddy again. What do you got?
This one's a little bit different. Everybody, I think, knows where this site is. This is the Luxfer site. And where, what we're here for is to ask for essentially a special exception, because it's a change of use. The building appears to be in disuse, that is, no one's using it, but that's not necessarily correct. The Luxfer company wrote me a letter, and wrote it to the town of Zoning Board Appeals, from their general counsel, indicating that during the past year, they have used that building on a frequent occasion for various things. And they've paid all their utilities, they've paid their taxes, uh, they've had people in there working. And I'll give you that letter, because I think it has to be part of the application.
Charlie, it sounds like you're concerned about the pre-existing non-conforming use of the property. But if you're gonna go from one use to another, um. I mean, I, I know it's not abandoned, it just has been vacant for a while.
It's.
Has it been active? Nobody knows.
They, they say it has been, and they say that they've done various things inside the building in the last year.
That's good.
That's, I think that's why I'm giving the letter. But I can, I can tell you the proposed use, though.
That would be good. That's what I wanted to hear.
Proposed use is by a company called Sid Harvey. They wanna go into the butler-type building that's at the far end, it's connected. They wanna take nineteen thousand square feet out of twenty-seven thousand. They're a wholesale distributor of heating, air conditioning, and refrigeration equipment. They have seventy-six locations on the East Coast. And they have one in Riverhead right now, but it's on Cromer Avenue, and it's only half the size, and so they wanna expand. They have now nine workers. They believe with the expansion, they'll have twelve or thirteen workers. As I say, for the most part, this is a wholesale place, not just for the most part, but it is. They receive a delivery every other day from a warehouse in Pennsylvania. They then, uh, have sixty percent of their orders delivered by their own trucks. Forty percent of the orders are picked up by contractors. Their hours are usually seven AM to five PM. They have Saturday, they are seven AM to one PM. They don't work on Sunday. Essentially, what we're doing is changing from a manufacturing and assembly-type operation to a storage and wholesale distribution. That site certainly needs to be picked up and worked on. The intent of my clients, who are the contract vendors, are to fix up the building once they can get some tenants in there, because they haven't closed yet. But as soon as they can get a tenant or two, they'll close, they intend to reface the building, and to make it much more aesthetic than it is right now. I think that this is an appropriate use for this site. It certainly is not an overtaxing use. I think it meets all the requirements of the code as far as the considerations for a special exception. Certainly, it's in harmony with the use that's there now. The use across the street is by hunter insulation, so it's not something that's really different for the neighborhood. And I think it's appropriate, it doesn't hurt the health and welfare of the community.
So you're, are you asking for a partial use? Because you're gonna use a warehouse part?
We're gonna use.
What's the other part of the building gonna be used for? Are you just gonna rent?
We have, yes, they're gonna rent to other.
For what?
We're gonna find that out quite soon.
I see, so.
Do you have any idea what?
There, there may be, but I don't wanna say it now until I can really get it from my client.
We've got a number of questions from someone who lives in their life, and one of the questions was, uh, what will be distributed from this facility? You had mentioned already, uh, uh, heating and air conditioning. Is anything else anticipated?
Not, I don't think on a distribution basis, no.
I beg your pardon?
I said, no, not that I know of. There's not gonna be any further distribution.
And you mentioned it, it's, it's been used for various uses, which is not addressed in the letter. What were the various uses before this?
Well, the uses before this were apparently, if I understand them, they used this to, to assemble, uh, food packages, MRE packages, for tru, army troops.
For military, right.
For the military, yeah. And they also were apparently using it to manufacture some sort of magnesium heat type of thing, so they could heat the MREs. Better than buns and burners, I guess. But, so it was used in a, in a fairly significant sense, and had a lot of employees, too.
And it, and the writer had two other questions, the first of which is, where will the pickup and drop-off of distribution materials be placed in the front or back of the building?
In the front of the building.
Where the loading docks are.
Yes, where the, there's loading docks right there.
And, and she doesn't give the address, but it says, we are wondering how close the trucks and day-to-day activity will, to be to our home. I don't, I'm not sure where her home is.
There are homes in back of this site.
And she doesn't, she doesn't address which houses.
And there are homes further down.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
But there's no, there's no home directly right there.
Yeah, I'm just saying, but she doesn't give you the address, you could be more specific.
I'm wrong when I say that. There are two mobile homes that are close by.
I beg your pardon?
I said there are two mobile homes that are close by.
Right, I've seen that. I'm saying, but just for the purposes of direct, she does not identify which house specifically it is.
Okay.
So, what we'd like to get is just the approval for that, as I say, this particular use.
So then you'll be making another application for the other uses?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, it's an interesting zoning issue in question. Certainly, if we do approve it, uh, you're gonna have to be aware, there's gonna be conditions about loading docks and time. I mean, the town code has certain times in it, but we can put conditions in it. I'd have to take a look at it again, but, you know, I can understand opening at seven, uh, trucks and stuff coming in and out. I know the trade starts early, so I get that part.
Yeah, excuse me, I just, I believe the town code says seven.
I have to look. I haven't looked in a long time.
That's, that's my understanding. If it's not, we'll have to comply with it, but I thought it was seven.
I'll take a look. Okay.
All right, anyone else to be heard on this matter? Step up. All right, the young lady, just raise your right hand, do you swear it's all the truth, nothing but the truth, so we got it?
I do. My name is Christine Ruthanowski. I live at six eight one Elton Street, directly across.
Directly across the street, we know that, yes.
Um, he didn't mention that, he's just two trailers. I don't live in a trailer living house. My concern is because of how, the in and out of the traffic. There's been many things in the factory you have before. We never had to deal with, you know, late night traffic, that's my concern, um.
Well, they said they're gonna operate from seven to five.
Okay.
We certainly can put additional conditions in that they don't operate in the evenings or at night. Uh, let's face it, in the real world, people bring in tractor-trailers sometimes two or three o'clock in the morning.
Well, I haven't had a tractor-trailer problem in years, because, uh, they never dealt with tractor-trailers over there, even though.
Right, I know.
Next door has trailers, but he doesn't have them running at night. I did have a big problem with the tractor-trailers for a while, which had nothing to do with the factory or him. But I finally knocked on enough doors that they decided they can't park there anymore. But, uh, but that's my concern about the noise level. He said seven o'clock, he sent the noise ordinance at eight o'clock, you know, in the town.
I have to look.
Huh?
Sounds good, Maureen.
What? Don't be funny, Fred.
No, 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 I'm not trying to be funny.
I'm just saying, I just, it's.
No, it just stinks. I don't, I don't wanna be woken up at eleven o'clock at night, by trucks coming in.
I'm telling you, I wonder, girl pulled a gun on me one night. I went out there, knocked on the door, and I said, they say, you can't stay here. That gun came out in my face, I was like.
Yes, you can.
Nice.
You know.
Nice hood.
So that was my concern about the traffic, you know.
Well, we're certainly avail, you know, we understand.
So thanks, thanks for hearing me.
Absolutely, Maureen.
Thank you, Christine.
Christine.
We don't have any problem agreeing to the time element. If it's eight o'clock, I, I thought it was seven. I thought that the opening of a business couldn't be before seven, so I, that's why I said that. But we don't have a problem, and we certainly.
Mr. Cuddy, we, we take you at your word at any time, please.
Thank you, but I, also, no question about the trucks. They tell me there's just one truck.
Okay.
A day, at the most.
Let's, let's hold off to the next meeting, and we'll see, we'll see what we got there, okay? Anyone else to be heard on this matter? All right, who's got it?
I got it. Mr. Chairman, I respectfully move appeal number twenty twenty-one dash four forty-eight Signature Partners, six eighty Elton Street, Riverhead, New York, to December ninth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
All right, Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mr., uh. Mr. Wisconsin.
Gaines. No, aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's the easiest way to do it. Let's have a motion to adjourn?
Nope.
We'll go one more.
Oh, God. One more. Go ahead, Mr. Cuddy.
Appeal twenty twenty-one zero five zero, Ellen Graziano, thirty-eight Leafy Way, Aquabog, Tax Map number six hundred eighty-six three thirteen, RB forty zoning for variances and or relief from chapter three oh one, section seventeen, where proposed front yard setback is thirty point four feet, minimum required is fifty feet, and where proposed side yard setback at budding side street is twenty-four point two feet, minimum required is fifty feet.
Sorry, Mr. Cuddy, cut you short. Go ahead.
Well, Ellen Graziano is here tonight. She has a home in Bay Woods. The home's on a fourteen thousand square foot lot in the RB forty district. She just wants to extend out essentially ten feet. She now is back forty feet, she wants to be back thirty feet. The reason for the extension is that her house is small, the first floor is nine hundred and sixty-six square feet. And so what she'd like to do is build essentially a room so she can have guests that can sit in the living room with her. And she's had that problem because it's, it's a small house. I think that her home certainly is very decently kept, I think that she'll not hurt her neighbors whatsoever by doing this. I don't think there's any environmental issues. And I think that the variance is really relatively small as far as the square footage goes, it's three hundred and sixty-one square feet that'll be added to the house and a little bit of the garage.
Sounds good to me. Anybody have any objections?
I don't have any problems on this, Mr. Chairman.
I don't have any problems.
Anyone else to be heard, any matter on this matter? Anything, no? Let's go. All right, Mr. Chairman, I move that the appeal of Ella Graziano, thirty-eight Leafy Way, Aquabog, SCTM number six hundred dash eight-six dash three dash thirteen, RB forty zoning for variances and or relief from chapter three zero one, section seventeen, where proposed front yard setback is thirty point four feet and minimum required is fifty feet, and where proposed side yard setback at budding side street is twenty-four point two feet and minimum required is fifty feet be approved in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as far as the building itself.
Second.
Okay. Let's go everybody down. Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
I say aye.
I say aye also.
Mr. Zoski says aye.
Okay, so Weskey and Gazilla.
Aye.
Okay, so your appeal has been granted, take it from there.
Good luck.